Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh two and we're ready to start this meeting and this meeting is being recorded. Um, Councilwoman Jones, could you do the invocation, please?
Certainly, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson. All hearts and minds are at one. Oh, Lord, our God, how excellent is your name in all the earth. Our eternal God, our Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. Help us to work together in harmony and purpose. Grant us clarity of thought and unity of mind so that our decisions may reflect your will and contribute to the greater good of all involved. Bless our discussion and our efforts in your grace. Father, we ask you to continue to bless this city, the administration, the employees, and of course, all of our citizens, oh God. Whatever it is that they stand in the need of, Lord, we ask you to meet every need on tonight. We ask for your clarity and your complete discernment in this meeting. It is in Jesus's name that we pray and say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Um, Councilor Clark Boy, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Good evening. Councilwoman Cross?
Here.
Councilman Hairston?
Here.
Councilman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Here.
And, you know, Mayor Curtis is absent.
Thank you. Um, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
There's second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Council, I'm sorry, uh, Mayor Pro Tim. I'd like to, uh, add two topics of discussion.
Okay.
Um, the cameras on seven oh four and Bright Seat Road and code enforcement pertaining to HOAs.
Any other additions? Discussion? Roll calls accepted gender? House Clark?
Sorry, my mute button was acting up. Councilwoman Cross?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
And Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Yes. Attending that bit. Um, get minutes for September twenty twenty five. So, I see we have a presentation for Glen Arden Police Station. Mister, uh, Thompson?
Uh, good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. Uh, yes, we have CPJA uh, here today to provide a presentation on the uh, Glen Arden Police Department, um, proposals, uh, locations. Um, if we can turn it over to them and, uh, they'll, they'll go through their presentation if Council desires.
Who in the water, Mister, uh, Ma- uh, Madam Mayor?
Councilman Herring?
Yes, I just want to make sure that, you know, we were privy to some information, the financial information. Please refrain from speaking out on that, just the, uh, department. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Yes, accepted. Thank you, uh, Councilman Herring.
Okay, um, we can turn it over. CPJA is on the line. I believe we can turn it over to Ms. Kim. Uh, hi, Kim.
Hi, Charles. Thank you. Um, thank you, City of Glen Arden, for having us. Let me just share my screen. Uh, if that's all right. Is my screen being shared?
Oh, not seeing it, Kim.
Oh, let me try again. How about now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you again, City of Glen Arden. Uh, my name is Kim Trong with, uh, Charles P. Johnson and Associates. With me, I have Robin Barnhart, um, the program manager, and Mohammed Shamim, uh, the architect. Today, we'll be presenting on the conceptual design of the police station. And tonight, we'll go over the site selection process and the ultimate site that we decided on. We'll discuss the police department needs as we talked with, um, Charles and Brian. We will go over the preliminary design discussion of both the site layout and the building design. We'll follow up with next question, uh, next steps and, and with any questions. Site overview. So in the process, um, of selecting a site, we took a look at two sites. Site one, which is outlined in green, um, and you all are probably very familiar with it. It's right across the street from the existing city hall, uh, where the police department is currently, um, operating out of. And when we're looking at it, one of the things that we, um, determined was there were a lot of opportunities on this site. One being, uh, there were very few environmental restrictions. Um, there, the site was not located in a floodplain. Uh, there's no stream on the site or near the site, which means that there's, uh, probably no critical habitat. There's no regulation for building within the stream buffer. There's no demolition necessary. Uh, there's not any existing buildings or structures on this site. Um, the site is quite large, uh, which provides a lot of opportunity for building, for stormwater management, for parking. Um, though there are some constraints, there's, I'm sure, as you've seen, a lot of nice trees over there who require tree removal, um, and relocation, and there are no existing utilities on the site. The second site that we looked at was site two, here, outlined in blue, uh, sort of sandwiched between Horace and Dicky's Restaurant, um, to the west and the Lord's Church of Transformation to the east. It's opportunities, one of the reasons why we looked at this site was because it used to be the former site of a bank. Um, it was appealing because there were existing water and sewer connections and in the existing access road, uh, for Martin Luther King Junior Highway. Though after looking at it more closely, we found a few constraints that uh, included a lot of environmental constraints. Um, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but back here there's a stream, um, that runs kind of parallel to the parcel line, which includes, uh, its buffer, so you're not allowed to build within the buffer of the stream. And within that, there's also potential critical habitat. Um, the site also includes a lot of steep slopes which make it di- uh, difficult for development. Um, and the existing site, although one of the opportunities was that it was a former, um, was formerly developed, it will require demolition of the existing pavement. And because the site is, uh, smaller in size than site one, the building space is more restricted. Um, sort of restricting the opportunities for development and for stormwater management. Likely, um, make it more difficult, uh, require more permits and more money. Um, the existing utilities, though, presented an opportunity. Um, if they were not adequately sized, uh, or adequately located, then the existing utilities may not be enough for the new construction and that would, um, you know, prove to be, uh, require more work. And there was permitting with the, um, Maryland Department of Transportation State Highway Administration. Um, Martin Luther King Junior is actually within the S H A, is owned and operated by S H A. Um, and so getting access onto their road would be difficult. So we ended up, uh, with Brian and Charles and the police department selected project site one to continue with, um, our conceptual design. It's, uh, almost three acres and the lines that you see on the screen, the red dotted line is that thirty foot state highway administration buffer that I was telling you about. Um, not permitted to build within that right of way. And then the yellow is, um, the ten foot building restriction line from the front and the back of the property. So what you see is within that area is the, uh, buildable area for the building. The police department needs. So we sat down with the chief of police, um, and discussed and identified all of the space that they would need for their activities, very specific, um, needs for the current staff, but also looking forward into the future, want to make sure that we're building, um, a department building that houses their future needs as well. So they were expecting an additional three officers. Um, and with it, we estimated, uh, square footage per type of room. And this is the building program. It came out to about ten thousand gross square footage. The preliminary design. So we'll start off with the outside of the building. This is an overview of the site layout. Um, you'll see the twenty foot landscape buffer around the property. That's to break up the visual, um, the, it'll break up the visual from the street and it also will help attenuate noise. The parking lot you'll see enters from Glen Arden Parkway, right across from existing city hall. Uh, with the square footage of the building, you're required for, you're required to have three parking spots per one thousand square feet of gross floor area. Uh, that comes out to about thirty required spots. Here, we've been able to fit about fifty, uh, we've been able to fit fifty-three. Um, that includes thirty-eight standard parking spaces. Over here to the west side of the building, you'll see a secured parking area which will be fenced off for the officers to, uh, safely park their vehicles. We also have, uh, four standard E V charging spots, uh, two ADA spots right by the front of the door. And we also have this area that we've reserved for potential parking, um, expansion. One of the discussions that we had was they were looking to expand, uh, or have an overflow lot from city hall during large events. And so we've reserved that area for that purpose. Um, it's also right across, which is nice and has, provides really nice connectivity. Uh, we didn't explore the impacts of the parking spot, uh, parking lot expansion here. Um, that would require probably more stormwater management. It would also require tree removal. Uh, but we've reserved that for, um, a later future discussion. Zooming in a little bit, we have our building. It will be a two-story building with a footprint of about sixty-five hundred square feet. Um, you can see the pedestrian access from Glen Arden Parkway in two spots, right here and closer to the, I don't know if you can see my cursor, uh, closer to the driveway down here. The front of the entrance, the front entrance of the building is going to be facing southeast over here. Um, and the stormwater management area to the southwest part of the parcel is just a conceptual representation of stormwater management. Will likely have, uh, stormwater management within the islands of the parking lot as well as half, or not half, um, the part of the building outlined here will be a green roof, which will also contribute to stormwater management. So this, um, this graphic here in the bottom corner is more of a, a representation than it is a, a two-scale, um, stormwater management facility. Uh, I also want to point out that I, uh, we've dotted this area too for potential additional parking if the department is interested in that as well. Uh, this is, uh, an aerial view rendering of the site layout. You can see the the walkways from the, from Glen Arden Parkway. You can see the green roof a little bit, uh, more clearly. This will be secured with a gate and the plantings are, um, the landscape is not, is not actually, uh, what is planned. It's more of a, a conceptual representation of it. And then we'll continue to the first floor and I'll hand it over to Robin. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. So, uh, now we're going to talk about the actual, uh, conceptual layout for the building inside. Um, next slide. So this is the, um, rendering or the first floor layout of the building and we're going to talk now more in depth of that. Next slide. So the first floor of the building is really laid out into two main distinct areas. Uh, boxed in red on this image is the, uh, officer space, so the left-hand end of the building. And then outside of that red box, so the right end would be what we call the entry or the public facing area. Between these two areas, there is a door, um, that will be remained locked or keyed, uh, so that, um, there's not free access into the officer's area. So looking in the officer's area inside here, we have the atrium, which is where the stairs and the elevator to the second floor are located. We also have space for, um, the different officer uses. This would include the bullpen, uh, a meeting room for the officers, a, a smaller meeting room on the first floor. There's also a roll call room, uh, administrative offices, dedicated space for the captains, sergeants, and lieutenants offices. And then we also provided, um, a space for the physical fitness or workout room. And then at the left end of this building is where the men's and women's locker rooms are located. And in between those is the door that exits out into the secured parking area. Now moving on to the next slide, um, talking about the entry in the public facing area. So the left-hand side of this red box, um, at the lower left corner is the main entrance into the building with the vestibule into the lobby. The dashed X over the lobby indicates that, uh, the ceiling is to the second floor. So it is, uh, the second floor will be able to look down into the lobby as well. Um, this lobby has a front desk for, for, uh, to be greeted by, um, but it's our staff desk as a receptionist or a greeting there. There's also space for people to wait in the lobby as well. And then at the back, there are spaces designated for a questioning room as well as a fingerprinting area. And then to the right end of the building, um, we have a public restroom area as well as a kitchenette and dining area. And then at the far end is a multi-purpose room, and this area is also the two-story height in this area. Uh, this space is, uh, in, uh, anticipated for either full events of, or full staff events for the police department or other, um, events within the town, um, as well as it could potentially be rented out if the city desires. Right? This view is a three-dimensional perspective of the first floor with the second floor removed to give you another view of what that space, uh, the spaces look like. And then on the next slide, um, we have some conceptional renderings of what the interior might look like as well. The upper left-hand view would be the, um, the lobby area. And then the, uh, bottom two pictures are within the police officer's space, the, uh, desk area as well as the stairs and elevator go- going to the, the second floor there. Uh, so moving to the second floor. Uh, next slide. The, uh, box area in red, uh, contains the police chief's office, uh, which includes a private restroom. Across the hall from the chief's office would be a larger conference room that can be fully outfitted with all the technological needs to have, to run meetings on a larger scale. Next slide. And then we, this area is the, the center part, um, in the center, the white area with the X three again is that's the area that's open down to, uh, the lobby. And around it is different storage spaces. Um, this includes for locked files, a vault room, evidence storage as well as supply rooms. And there's also a visitor restroom up here as well, uh, for, um, individuals in the conference room. Uh, and then next, between the conference room and the police chief's office is the door that goes out onto the green roof. Um, so with the, going through the space needs, we were able to accomplish, uh, everything in the floor span that we've already shown. Um, so there is some additional area over the first floor where we're currently showing to be a green roof. Um, it's not needed as office space at this time or not projected at this time. So this gives the opportunity to provide several, uh, benefits out there. One, it can be accessible to, um, the police for, you know, relaxing or taking a break. Um, it also provides, uh, it can provide stormwater management. Um, it also could be areas that could be solar ready for other, um, green infrastructure within the building as well as it's been shown that green roofs help keep the buildings cooler, which help improve energy efficiency of HVAC systems as well. However, we would, this section of the building would still be designed as though structurally would be designed to hold a full second floor. So it allows for future expansion should the need arise within the city that this area could be, the green roof could be removed and it could be fully enclosed as part of the building as well. Um, I would also point out that the roof of the second floor could also be, um, as a stormwater management green roof as well to provide that. All right. So here's another three-dimensional perspective, this time with the second floor added on. Um, you can see a little bit different view of that floor of how it's laid out. And then the next four sides, four slides will be different renderings of views of the building. So the first one, um, this is a view from the parking lot, looking at the front entrance of the building. Uh, in this one, we've added, um, at the bottom is more of a, a section view of the building to see the face of it. The next slide is from, from looking at the building from Martin Luther King Junior Highway. Next slide, and this one is a view of what it might look like at night with the, uh, outdoor lighting and, uh, parking lot lighting and things like that. And then next steps for the project. So, um, this would, this presentation concludes the conceptual phase of the project. So moving on, um, the next steps would be to do the full design of the building and the site, which includes development of the entire set of construction drawings and obtaining permits of those. Uh, once the permits are obtained, then the city can put the project, uh, out to bid, uh, to select a contractor to actually construct the building and, uh, the site improvements. Um, that really concludes the presentation we have and we'd like to open up for any questions that you all may have.
Robin, um, if I can, oh, sorry. Uh, jump in. Oh, sorry, this is Robin, nevermind. I'll let Mayor Pro Tim, uh, handle. I just wanted to speak on a couple of points, Mayor Pro Tim, if that's okay with you.
Councilwoman, um, Jones?
I'll yield to him and, and to, to let, let him, um, present his idea, whatever his idea is.
Can we get the screen back? Okay.
All right. Uh, thank you so much for this presentation, um, and to Mayor Pro Tim and Council. Um, I think what I just wanted to frame for discussion and question, uh, is really, uh, the, the purpose of this presentation was really, um, to get the entire concept, uh, before you and before the public. Um, and to really kind of frame it around that decision point of go or no go, um, in the next phase. So hopefully we, um, are able to think about it, uh, conceptually in the next phase would really be kind of the honing in, the detailed design, uh, phase of the project where we'll have, you know, thirty-six, thirty percent completion, sixty percent completion, a hundred percent completion, um, really honing in on the cost elements uh, before it went out to bid for, um, a, a construction contract. Um, so this is really about the feasibility and the need, um, and what it, it could look like. Um, but certainly is not dictating, you know, um, every square foot and every bathroom, uh, or every blade of grass or tree that needs to be there. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, tee that up for framing, um, and, and then hand it over for, for questions. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim and Council.
I'm, okay. Could you, uh, stop sharing your screen and, uh, Councilwoman Jones? Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson. Um, my question is concerning the, the green room. That's a lot of space. Is that a lot of useless space or is that, uh, designed uh, in, in for now, the, the twenty-fifth, I mean, the twentieth century? Is this what they do now?
Um, green roofs are definitely becoming more popular, um, for several reasons. One is, is that it does help your HVAC equipment run easier or for more efficient. But what is also being done a lot with is for stormwater management. Um, so as Kim mentioned in our, the site plan, the area we marked for stormwater management is very conceptual. Um, stormwater management nowadays is not allowed to be just a single facility unless you've explored all the other options. And those other options are smaller bio-retention facilities in the parking islands that Kim mentioned, green roofs, and then you can move into other things like previous pavement and things like that. Um, the decision point on those really comes when you get into detailed design for the project. So we showed basically, we kind of withheld a, a spot that would be the maximum, roughly the maximum size needed to, if you had to go to a full facility there. Um, but the, the green roof can help, uh, really off, uh, offset a lot of that. Um, but again, the green roof that we're showing here is also conceptual so that you can understand what could be there.
Okay, and, um, hmm, I only see one, um, access to that roof and that's down the corridor to pass the chief's office and then out to the green roof. And, okay, now, if, if the city decided to go with this green roof, but like you said, it's probably stormwater management that will have to determine whether we do or not. But, um, it has no, no covering. I mean, it's just open. And if we had decided to put furniture or something out there, uh, I guess every year we'd just have to cover it up. Or is there an awning or something that can go over there? Uh, temporary, I guess not. It would be temporary because we, it would be to determine later on down the line if they wanted to use the space for something else and then build it out.
Yeah, so I think it, the green roof area is, um, intended that it's a space that could be used. The access, it, you're correct, is only from the one part, which is from within the secured police station. So it's not like, uh, visitors to the, to the police department could just walk up there on their own. Um, because that would be accesses behind the locked door. Um, you certainly could put, uh, furniture out there. I would probably pick more of like outdoor furniture that you'd normally see like on decks and things like that. Um, and there certainly could be awnings and that would be a detail that would be resolved, uh, and determined during the detailed design phase for selection of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other council member have any questions?
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor.
Um, Councilman Herring?
Yeah, I guess my concern also is with that green roof because again, you said that it can be, it's going to be built to basically expand if we have to. it's gonna be built to basically expand if we have to uh and enclose it and turn it into office space if needed. So if we get rid of the green room, green roof, won't we have to uh compensate somewhere else for stormwater management with a pond or something?
So i- if if that was to happen down the road, what I would probably suggest is that green roof area, if it was counted as stormwater management, when you enclose it, you could put then on top of the newly enclosed, that new roof, the uh replacement green roof area for stormwater management.
So but if we if we and let's just say, I saw your conceptual plan that you had a retention pond. What if we just decided to do the retention pond and not a green roof at all?
Yes. Yeah, you're correct. So when we get into detailed design, if you know, if a green roof is not uh something the city wants to entertain, uh then that's where, again, we won't be able to go straight to that conceptual single biopond. We will have to look at smaller bioponds in the parking islands or on the sides of the buildings, things like that. Um because that is how the stormwater regulations are currently written. Um doesn't mean there can't be a biopond in the area we are, but it won't be able to be a single one unless we can prove that all other options have been exhausted, and one of those options we have to prove that's been exhausted is green roof. So um it doesn't mean that we can't get away with not doing a green roof, but um again, the stormwater management in detail we worked out when we get into the concept design, the thirty percent stage, that's when we can really dig in and and really look at detailed um potential for stormwater management layouts.
So can we also, let's say we don't have that, let's say we don't use that area as a green roof, we decide to put a green roof on a second story, we could do that also too.
That's correct.
Okay. Um I I I guess my question also is with the atrium, the open atrium. That's so you can look down from the second floor down to the first floor. And the reason for that atrium is what? Because that seemed like that seemed like that could be office space to me. Um but what was the reason for the atrium?
Yeah, I'll um Mohammed Shamim is on the call. He's actually the architect on our team, so he can speak to that from an architectural standpoint. Mohammed?
Okay, I am here. Uh uh thank you for your questions. Actually, the atrium is give the your feelings that you have you have a big space with a breathing space too. Uh if I bear like a uh the people is around here and like a room that is sense of uh sense of uh uh receptions is different than the atrium. You can see the big space, it's look like a big space, and also you can see the 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 uh the functions, because like like upstairs, you have the uh chief of the police officer, and they can uh communicate with the with the basement. Other than if you have the a single floor, then the uh uh visual connection is disconnected. So if I have the open up this one, then the upstairs those are there, they can uh 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 visibility and also the uh the monitoring the the activities and downstairs.
So will the um so the ceiling of the green roof, will that be like a um a um will it be like glass or where would it uh already closed over? It's not it's not gonna be like a a sun a sunroof. It's gonna be completely closed over.
For for the atrium or?
Yes, top of the atrium.
So the top, so the atrium, which is like the center entrance where you come in in the lobby, that is open all the way to the roof of the second floor.
Okay.
So it's not only the green roof area.
It's not a sunroof, though.
No.
No.
Okay.
But the windows on the second floor would still let light into the second floor, which would also come down and help provide natural light into that lobby atrium area as well.
Okay, alright, I think um yeah, okay, I thank you. Um I think that we as a council need to just go over this again to see what we what options we really want to look at and have. So alright, thank you. Uh thank you, Mayor.
Uh Mrs. Simpson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh I I just wanted to also briefly uh mention that we do have our Director of Public Works, Mr. Sean Nichols uh on the call as well. Now, he's only in his uh second week uh with the city, and he definitely brings a wealth of experience in managing large scale projects like this, um uh including uh serves as a project manager for the Soolan High School, uh has relationships with the state and has worked with uh Senator Benson as well, just a point of reference for the council to be made aware of and to formally introduce him, uh just so you can know that he is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um Council, no other, oh Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson. Once again, can we reiterate the next steps? What is the next step?
Um Brian, do you want to address that?
Uh yes, thank you.
Yeah, it it can it can go to the previous slide you can already mention there.
Yep. Um thank you so much. Great question. Uh so the next step uh would be uh a decision from council, kind of the no-go, go-no-go uh decision point, if we wanted to um direct staff to draft an RFP um and move forward with the detailed design. Uh this really was the uh feasibility. Uh so the detailed design, we'll get into, I think, a lot more of some of the questions that were outlined tonight. Um and that would be an iterative process that would um allow kind of um percent completions that would have uh cost estimations tied to it, um and continued refining. Um so whittling down, you know, I think some of the design elements, is it glass? Is it enclosed? Is there um, you know, a green roof or not? Um a lot of those things will be refined along with the cost. Um and from that phase, um the the actual uh drafting of RFP for um a contractor to to begin the building process. Um so there would still be two more um RFPs, uh but the next phase really would um be be detailing everything and and really um finalizes kind of the project. But this is the kind of point of no return on way of really moving forward and investing um significant uh funding into this project or uh determining whether or not um, you know, we might want to move in a different direction.
Okay, so let me understand this. The next step is for us to, the the council to sit down and determine whether we want to accept this conceptual design?
Um yes, and I don't know that we would necessarily need to be accepting this specific design. I think this gives us a really good framework for uh a number of the elements that were outlined as needs and and wants. Um I think, again, uh even if council decided, yes, we want to move forward with the police station, um but we want to scale it down, you know, two thousand square feet, um that would be able to be done um in the in the next kind of detailed phase as we're going through room by room and and kind of uh specifying needs and 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 that piece. So uh this is really, are we taking the next step in doing that design? Um or do we want to step back and look at a totally different location? Do we want to look at a totally different idea of attaching it? You know, I I think um those would be the the broader questions or or not do a station at all. Um but if if it's a matter of um, yes, we want to do a police building, and this is a great start, but we want it to be X percentage smaller, um that I think that the recommendation would be to still move forward, and we can refine those pieces um through the RFP process and through the detailed design process.
Okay, so do you have, does the administration have in mind a meeting that they want to set up with the 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 council? Uh so that we can, because I don't believe that there's a council person on here that does not want to move forward with the police station. We just need to get get it in in motion. I mean, uh correct me if I'm wrong, any council member. But I think we do want to move forward with with the police station. It's just, you know, uh I don't want to see us drag our feet on this project. You know, let's let's go forward. I mean, i- if that's the pleasure of the council, then let's uh set up a meeting to determine what we're going to do here, because uh we do have some other uh things in the fire that we, you know, want to make sure that we don't want to lose those either.
Uh ab- absolutely. Um Councilwoman, if I might uh suggest, if that is the the will of the council, I think uh an appropriate action might be a motion to direct the administration um to draft a resolution uh moving the council uh or moving this project forward and directing the the administration to begin drafting um an RFP. Um and we would be able to bring that back before the council um either at the meeting um in October or the uh first meeting in in November, but probably the meeting in October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, I guess my concern is this, because I hate when I hear them want to draft a resolution, and I don't feel this is this is the final conceptual site plan that we actually need to be going by, because there are some concerns that I know we all had when we had our other meeting on this. We just if we do a resolution to put this out for whatever, and we're going to make some major changes. There's also, we also need to look at the financial side of in the funding side of this, and that's why I say we don't need to speak on the numbers tonight, because we as a group got to sit sit down and look at the real the realistic um look at the reality of actually, you know, getting this built. And I think it's more that has to be done before we put out any RFP or any draft, any resolution to move forward with anything, because again, I think there's a lot that needs to be involved with this and um um with this building. Like I said, I would like to see it built too, but you know, again, we have to look at all aspects of this of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. I I also, I concur with what he's saying. Um I think we need to, as a council meet as well. Thank you. Anyone else have any um council member have any um concerns or suggestions or questions that we'll move on? Thank you. Okay, we have um two ordinances um on the agenda. Uh the second reading would be um and the at the regular meeting um on the third Monday of this month. So um these are the ordinances brought um forth by Councilman Harry concerning um animals. Okay, so um.
Madam President, me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, just my thing, I would just like to bring them at the next meeting as an emergency ordinance, so they can go into effect immediately.
Uh could you repeat that?
Oh, I would like to bring them um as an emergency ordinance at the next meeting, at the next regular meeting, so that they can go into effect immediately. That'd be one, the third Monday.
That I'd be on the twentieth, okay.
Yeah, yeah, uh yeah. Also, I would like to ask also that um these do not have to come back to another public hearing, so they should not be on the agenda for the public hearing on Tuesday. And if we have no legislation for the public hearing on Tuesday, I don't do, we don't really need to have it. I don't think we really need to have it unless there's something else on our agenda that day.
Oh, you mean the uh the public's meeting on next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, yeah.
I concur. If nothing comes up, then I mean yeah, we wouldn't need one. Um, okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um do you have that council clerk of um bringing them forth as emergency?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so we're moving on to um, okay, we have the reports. Everyone should have the monthly reports if they um no questions or no concerns, we can move on to the topic discussions. Moving on, um first, we have retirement for mayor and council members. Uh the requested is Councilman Williams, Councilman Williams, you're on.
Uh good evening, uh my colleagues and citizens. Um upon coming back into office, I asked the HR director to take a look at the different cities in this county um that have retirement for city council, uh legislative bodies. And there was a, uh there was quite a few that did, and there's quite a few who didn't. So uh my position, I I wanted to get a poll and discuss with my colleagues, how do they feel about this? You know, you can't raise salary and and I mean during your term, but people do this for the style, the solid you get is not comparison with the work you put in and the hours you put in. And if you you you're doing from years, and you work some places, um once you get a retirement, you work for the county council or state government or or Congress or um state um most cities, there is a a retirement after certain number of years. And I just believe, I don't care, it's fifty dollars a month, a hundred dollars a month, and we have to pay in. So I did ask the HR director to um look into it and give the data to the council. I don't know if she gave it to the council yet, but I just wanted to get a sense of once here, what was the feeling of those who's whatever years, if you choose to pick twelve years, sixteen years, twenty years, like other legislative body, um could the um what's the feeling of this body about having a uh retirement for legislators and mayors? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Does anyone, any council member have any any other que- any questions or any um Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson. Uh my question is, would this be for consecutive years that you've uh served on a council or as mayor, or would it be just as the accumulated that you have?
Is that question directed to me? Yes, yes. It would be cumulative. Let me just serve, whether you serve as an employee, whether you serve as a to the city, or you serve the legislative and an employee, this cumulative that you would be entitled to some type of retirement like other cities in this county have.
And so this would be a retirement plan that we would have to pay into?
That could be it, yes. Or uh part, some of them give is a part of the uh a perk or the benefit.
You said a perk or a benefit?
Meaning that the city pays into it. You wouldn't have to, or it'd be both. Like our city right now, our retirement is the the employees pay some and the uh city pays into it. And thank, I just want to get, I want to just thank the council for years for doing that, because we tried to do that years ago, could never get it done. I still like to see the police department get a better re- a better retirement, and I'll bring that back later to keep our offices.
Is that a um a new ha- uh same hand, Miss uh Councilwoman Jones?
Uh yes, let me lower that hand. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cross.
Thank you so much. I just have a question on the um recommendation. Uh if we look at the annual salary, guess about at eighty-five hundred for a council member, and at about fifteen percent of that being applied towards some type of retirement, that puts us roughly around twelve um hundred and seventy-five dollars. So you're right, it would equate to about a hundred and six dollars, twenty-five cents a month before taxes, after taxes, probably like ninety-six dollars. Um I think that there is an honor in there, and I hear it in your voice, uh that I believe the Maryland Municipal League also does for those that have served over twenty years of of public service um in this capacity, uh that they're actually coded as Hall of Famers in the service of, you know, community leadership, if you will. So that is a significant, you know, nice certification, if you will, uh that can be always applied to people that have met, again, that twenty-year retirement scope um and then affiliated. Again, that twenty-year retirement scope and then affiliated with, you know, local municipality or city town. Leadership. So I, I admire the leaning in on it. I do acknowledge, though, with all of the projects that we have going and the amazing discussion that we just had over the police department. Noting that these are very interesting times that we're in. Is the right time for this or is the timing a tad bit premature? Considering we're currently in a furlough and many folks in our community. And I know that many people across our county are trying to help those that have found themselves in a very uncanny position. Maybe that's something that we could maybe put in a, put a pin in it until. We find ourselves at a, at a place as a nation and state and even a county. That doesn't really roll downhill to the cities, because anything happening there hits the cities. That would be my only concern, Councilman Williams, is that we really have a people. First priority, I believe, right now. And I know that the employees of the city. Have a time period in which they pay into and maybe. Mr. Simpson can come online and really give us a refresher if HR is online on what that looks like. How much they pay in, what's a base salary, just a sample, so that we can really pull up. And that was just my little small numbers, but we can really get an appreciation for what we're asking here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cross. Anyone else, any other council member?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Harry.
Yes, I, I, I just don't feel that we as council members. I mean, we took this job really as a, as a, really almost as voluntary position, and we get a stipend of eighty-four hundred dollars a year. To do it to cover gas, you know, when we go to meetings, you know, other, other things that involves a position. And really, right now, we can't even afford the retirement program that we have for the employees. You know, if we had done something different before, it might, it might have been something feasible, but with this two-hundred thousand dollar a year. Retirement program that we have to fund every year and it goes up every year by the cost of living adjustments. I don't think we can afford it and I don't think it'd be fair to the citizens to put that burden on their backs again. When we still have to figure out how we're going to close the deficit for twenty-twenty-seven. Me, I'm, I'm, you know, I mean, I've been on, now there's twenty, going on twenty-four years. You know, and I probably would be eligible for it, but I really don't want it. I don't feel I need it. I have a nice retirement, a nice retirement policy on my full-time job. And I think most of us have full-time jobs where we got retirement coming in already, so why would we need to take the pennies from the city? You know, when we just really just don't volunteer, it's really a volunteer effort with a stipend attached to it to cover some of the. Basic expenses that we have, you know, in, in now the job. So that's my feelings on this. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Cross, is that a new hand?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson. I'm sorry. And also, I acknowledge the comments there from Councilman Herring relative to. The budget that we're currently grappling with to make sure that we can account for taking care of our city employees. But I had asked for the city manager or the director of HR to please come online. And advise us a really quick, high-level, what it looks like for the employees right now that have chosen. To pay into that retirement system, so we can understand kind of the weight that we're asking of, you know, eighty-four hundred dollar a year. You know, allotment or stipend. Are they able to come online? Thank you.
Good evening. This is Karen Schultz, HR specialist. I did do a research for Councilman Williams prior to. The new term. And what I found was that every municipality. That uses the state of Maryland's retirement system. Also by mandate, have to offer that same retirement system to its elected officials. I talked, I reached out to all twenty-seven municipalities. I've actually heard from all but eight. Nine of them that.
Unknown caller.
Use the state of Maryland also offer it to the elected officials. However, the elected officials do not participate because it's not cost-effective. The treasure is online, but what I can tell you, and if, if I'm not correct, Mr. Stewart, can you chime in? The new retirement system is as follows. The city pays three percent of the employees' retirement. Under the old retirement system, they paid two-point-five percent. We have, our retirement system is through Mutual of America and it's four-fifty-seven B governmental. Employees may pay into the governmental themselves. The first four percent that, that an employee pays, or the city will match up to the first four percent that the employees put into it. The employees may put in as much as they wish or as little as they wish, but the city will only match the first four. So our retirement basically is. No more than a max of seven percent, three percent that is standard across the board, whether you participate yourself or not. And then an additional up to four percent. I think that's right, Mr. Stewart. I got it correctly.
Mayor Pro Tim. That is, that is correct. He has it right. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Williams.
I just want to make a comment back to what I just heard from this Councilman Herring. And every time it comes to city employees, us council members, which we are city employees too. We are elected officials, but we are city employees and we are no different. And you just heard the HR specialist said, by mandate, if you belong to the state system. You have to offer it to the elected officials. We so happen to are not using state system. So we're using mutual overhaul. Why? I don't know, but that's what we doing. Maybe that needs to be changed down the line, but here and there. So, no. We don't need this pennies, as Mr. Herring says. It's not, it's about the need, it's about recognition of service that one does. Ms. Cross said it so eloquently that the Maryland Municipal League recognizes. People who've done more than twenty years. And it's such achievement to commit that much time for the stipend that you get. So all I was just asking to get a feedback from the council, whether or not. Were interested, was there room in your heart or whatever, to even discuss this to move forward with it? Based on the information that Ms. Schultz has already given to you. But man, but mind you, this ain't something that. Wasn't thought about. I just wanted to know the fever pitch of what we're dealing with in order to whether we want to move for it. Again, if we was in the state retirement system, it wouldn't be a choice. You would have, you would have to mandate it and, and we have to do it. But from some reason, over the years, and I can't understand why, we chose not to join this state retirement system. So, thank you. I'll leave it like that.
Thank you. So are you asking for a consensus?
I just want to, by vote or whatever, who would be interested in looking for doing it and who is not. I heard one that said no, and it don't have to be now, it can be within the next two or three years. But I just wanted to know whether or not more energy need to be dealt with it, or is something a hard no that most council members don't want? That's all.
Okay, well, I will start off by saying, I did hear, I mean, this has come up before. I think it came up, you voted up before, like in. In the twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-one term. And. And, you know, and I did hear what Councilman Herring said, and I did hear also what Councilwoman. Cross said. And for me, I, I would say. I really wasn't for it back then, and I'm not now, simply because, especially now, because of the fact that. Because of the fact that some of the things that Council, Cross said, the time that we're in now. And what's going on with jobs and just different situations concerning people. Also, for me, I, I mean, it's, it's just. You know, servant hood for me. I'm, I'm not looking, I mean, the, the, when I first came on two thousand seventeen, I didn't even know. That there was even a stipend, you know, so that's not something that I would necessarily have to have. Again, we are not using. The, the state, so. I don't think we should change just to do that. And also. Again, we are paying out a lot for the employees now, and so we just need to make sure that we can even afford that. So my answer is, I mean, I'm not interested. So. Council clerk, can you take a consensus?
Councilwoman Cross?
No, not at this time.
Councilman Hairston? Councilman Herring?
No.
Councilwoman Jones?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Council Clerk. Okay. Anyone else have anything to say on this subject? That's not, we move on to the next topic of discussion. So we have. The cameras on seven oh four. In Bryce, in the Bryce Road. Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson. I just have a question, because I'm kind of confused here between. I think somebody needs to be muted also. Whoever Carolyn is, you need to mute. Thank you. And I don't know whether the, if, I got one answer from the administration and one answer from the police department. Are the cameras on seven oh four and Bright Seat Road, are they operating, operating? To. For violations. And another thing, before we get there, on Bright Seat Road. I saw the information that was sent by Prince George's County concerning. That stop sign change, not stops, I'm sorry, the speed limit change. And, and they said that, reading the letter that was sent to the administration. They said regarding the speed limit issue along Bright Seat Road and Everts. Street and Glen, and Glen Arden Parkway, where twenty-five mile per, mile per hour sign was erroneously posted. Okay, so I think as a council. If we, if we must get, because they determined that they, it was set up for thirty-five miles an hour, because it was. What do they call it? A collector road? Some guy, they called it, they gave it a name, and they said they did a, a study on it to determine that it would, that it would be this. So I'm, and they said now, if we wanted to, that they would consider thirty miles per hour. But the thirty-five mile per hour was because this was a. Collector road. I think I said collector. I have to read it again. I'm sorry. But now, if the, if the administration and the police department wants the council to weigh in on this. Or whether it should be thirty or thirty-five. We need to know that, so that if these cameras are not up and operable, operational, they need to come back online. And then we need to determine, I also saw a conversation with, with some of the council concerning. reimbursing the citizens or persons that had gotten tickets during this period of. We can't determine what the speed limit is supposed to be, when the county, it's a county road and they have already determined what the speed limit should be. And why it was changed, the county says it was erroneously changed, but they, you know, it, to me, that means it should have never been changed. It should have stayed thirty-five. So are the cameras up and operable for violations? I know seven oh four belongs to the state. They make the determination, regardless of what anybody says. They have the last say on what they're going to do with their road. But we have the cameras up there, those cameras. I remember when I first came on the council in two thousand seventeen, Senator Benson and Ms. Eason. Those persons were advocating have cameras up on seven oh four because of the speeding. And then I know at one point during my tenure on the council, the state came and wanted to. Do a, a road diet so that they could add back bike lanes. And we sent a letter saying that we, that's not something that the city wanted to do. But I see now that when the city put in, redid the road, the seven oh four, they put the bike lanes in anyway. This is what, four years later, two or three years later? So what I need to know is, if, does the council, if, from the administration or from the police department. If you want the council to weigh in on this, whether those, I need to know if those cameras are up and working. Because we didn't invest in this so that they would be just sending out warnings. Right now, they, we've, we've sent out the notifications that people know that the cameras are up there and they're operable. Are the cameras up and working? And do, and does the council need to weigh in on whether they need to be yes or no?
Councilwoman Jones, who are you, prefer to answer?
Either the, either the administration or the police department. Either one can, whoever knows the answer to that question. Where, where the, the camera said right now, I would like an answer. And if they don't know, I need an answer by closing business on Friday.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Mr. Simpson?
Yes, currently, they are not, there was correspondence sent to council and we do need to. Get a direction from council on whether we want to reactivate, they are on pause. And reactivate seven oh four, very clear, cut. We meet, met the time as far as the publication. And then the Bright Seat Road, just confirmation from council to proceed and to proceed with the speed limit at thirty-five. As, as you stated, Councilwoman Jones. So with direction from council, either this evening or directed. Or responding to the email, whatever the council pleases to do there. That answer your question?
Yes, but I'd like to take a consensus tonight so that we can move forward with this, if this is the pleasure of the council.
Okay, before we do that, Councilwoman Cross.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I was just going to say the same thing that Councilwoman Jones just said. We do need to take a consensus tonight, because I have sent in several emails regarding this particular topic in my response. But I think to put it to rest, the way that Councilwoman Jones has, you know, stated. We do need to take a voice vote tonight. Thank you so much.
Okay, so the consensus. For Bryce Road. Remaining at thirty-five. Miles per hour. And also, Councilwoman. Jones, are you, is it a question about whether the speed? Camera should be there, period, or just the speed limit?
No, the speed limit was thirty-five, it should have stayed at thirty-five, because like I said, it's, this is a county road. And the county had already did this, from the letter that I read from the county, they had already did the study on what the speed limit should be. And like I said, they called it a collector road, and because it's been designated already, it should, should have stayed at thirty-five. So as far as the, the speed for, take a consensus for the speed limit staying at thirty-five. Like I said, they also said in their, their, their letter that we could drop it to thirty. But I think it's been thirty-five for so many years that I've known of, since I've lived here, that, you know. that, you know, uh, it's, it's comfortable at thirty-five, and they've already did the study to say that, that thirty-five is good for that road. And, and like I said, the road belongs to the county. So, uh, uh, consensus for the, to keep it at thirty-five, and a consensus to have it reactivated so that we can move forward.
Um, Madam Mayor, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Herring.
Yes, I just want to be clear on that. So, Bright Seat Road is not working, and seven oh four is working. Is that what we're saying, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor Protim?
Yes.
Um, uh, no, they are all, they're both on pause right now. They're, they're not active in collecting tickets at this point.
Okay, I, you know what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this, and I said this before, and I think we mentioned this before. Y'all gotta communicate better, because the last email I got was that the seven oh four cameras were working after August fifteenth, because we met all, all the requirements of the state. And now you're saying they're not working. So we're, I mean, y'all got to do better. I mean, y'all really got to do better. You know, y'all get on here and y'all talking circles, and we trying to figure out what's what. So, none of the cameras are working, are, are activated. They, 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 they're just, they're not activated. They're just not doing anything. Is that what we're saying? Seven oh four and Bright Seat Road.
Correct, they're on pause right now. Uh, if, if, uh, Mayor Protim, uh, Mr. Wood, who was working with that correspondence, he can, uh, elaborate a bit further?
Uh, yes, just pulling up the email, but yes, as of right now, they are both, uh, not, um, issuing tickets. Um, but I will pull up the email to clarify exactly what was communicated to council. Um, it was my recollection that, uh, it was indicated that both were on pause, but, um, as the conversation continues, I'll be sure to pull up that exact email and confirm exactly what was communicated with council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Councilman, um, Williams.
Do we have any li- financial liability to the vendor for having these cameras off? What kind of contract do we have that, that, should they put it up at their expense, correct?
Uh, Mayor Protim, yes.
Yes. Mrs. Simpson?
Put it at their expense. So, in the contract, do we have certain days, a number of days during the year that they must be operational? Uh, or can we turn them on and turn them at our whim? Something is amiss to me with that. So, I'm just asking that question. Um, if you don't have the information, um, please provide it at some point in time, because I hate to have a liability, we have these things off when we have certain days that we need to have to fulfill our contract. So, if you, do any of y'all know that now? If not, please research it.
Yes, uh, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor Protim and Councilman Williams. Uh, yes, that's a great question. So, the contract stipulates that, um, within the first six months, if we terminate the contract, then the city is liable, um, for the cost of installation alone. Um, but i- if there's a pause or, uh, desire to relocate a, a particular camera, um, that's something that is to be negotiated. But because they, um, the company receives a percentage of each ticket, um, there's not an immediate, uh, liable, liability on the city in terms of financial liabilities. Um, but there would be a cost to the city, um, if we were to terminate, uh, within the first six months of operation, which we are still within that window. Um, and I would imagine, uh, while I'm not a lawyer, that there would be an argument to be made that if a substantial portion of the initial six months were paused, um, that they would be able to make a, a, an argument that, um, the, the remaining months, uh, that you would have to be within the six months of operational period, uh, before that liability would be resolved.
Ma- Madam, Madam Mayor, do I stare at the floor?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so, so y'all got my point. I hope it's clear, because I would imagine, at some point, they're going to come back within, after the six months, and not getting revenue, and want to either extend, just saying that, you know, we didn't make our money. So, I just need to understand, how long is this contract? Is it, uh, without penalties, it's six months, and we can counsel at no fine after six months? Or no penalty after six months? Um, let's see, I think the council needs to understand the liability before they start, we start making decisions, cut them off, cut them on, move this, that, that thing, because there is a financial liability with the, with these deci- decisions that we make. And we need to have all the information before we make those decisions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor?
Oh, Councilman Herring?
Yes, um, I, I, I want to ask a question too about that. Um, why aren't we getting guidance from Red Speed on installation of these cameras and the procedures that we needed to get them to be activated? City Manager or Assistant City Manager, anyone here ask that, answer that question?
Mayor Protim, yeah?
Mrs. Simpson?
Yeah, Councilman Herring, can you clarify that question? Are you saying why are we getting?
Didn't we get guidance? Because what I kept hearing is Red Speed is the, we're all in B R, they know it from beginning to end. They gave us advice on what we needed to do, where they needed to go, and everything else that comes with Red, with installing these cameras. Because they installed the cameras. As well as the procedure needed to make sure that we were, were in compliance with everything when it came to activating these cameras. Where did they give us that guidance?
Um, from what I understand, that was definitely, uh, done, I think during a previous city manager, relative to the initial setup and, and some of the guys there. I don't know, Chief is on the line, he can definitely speak a bit more on that. And then, yes, they certainly gave guidance as they got closer to their initial installation.
And so, has anybody looked at their contract to see what requ- if they were required, what their requirements were, what the obligations were to us as a city when it comes to installing those cameras? Because again, if we are installing the cameras and they're saying, okay, you can activate them, because you met all the qualifications, all the requirements to activate, then they can't hold us hostage for, I don't think they should hold us liable for anything. Um, but has anybody went over their contract to see exactly what it spells out in the contract when it comes down to these cameras? Because me personally, I think it's a big mess from beginning to end. Um, and we still haven't discussed, you know, refunding these people their money, who got tickets erroneously because the speed limit sign was at twenty-five, and seven oh four because the speed, this, the camera should not have even been activated before August fifteenth, fifteenth or sixteenth. So, um, you know, I mean, yeah, it needs to be more discussion on this. Um, again, and I think we mentioned this before, communication is key. Um, we are asking questions that should have been, we could have asked earlier if it was brought to us, instead of pushing us out without the council really knowing what's going on.
Want a clarification?
Y'all sent out, y'all sent out these emails, which I don't follow up, and y'all think the emails is, okay, I sent out the email and, and, and we're fine, we're covered. No, you're not covered. You need to bring these things up in work sessions. You need to bring them up, and whenever we have a meeting, if no, if no council member is asking you about these speed cameras at a work session, you need to ensure that we read the emails. Um, because we get a lot of emails. But again, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I just don't understand the whole concept of, you know, Red Speed, put them out there, Red Speed gave us advice on this, Red Speed, this, Red Speed, that. Now, we got to worry about, now we're in the mess we're in, and is that because, you know, again, they didn't give us clear and concise guidance on how to move forward once these things were put up? And I want to know, has anybody read the contract to find out what their obligation is to the city? All right, thank you, um, um, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protim, point of a clarification?
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to clarify for the record, on date September nineteenth, uh, the administration did update council with the number of tickets that were issued, the number of tickets that were paid, both on Bright Seat and Maryland seven oh four. Um, as part of that communication, uh, the council further, um, advised that the administration recommends the following, resume enforcement on seven oh four at the posted speed limit, number two, resume enforcement on Bright Seat Road at thirty-five mile per hour. Um, and point three, if council wishes to discontinue enforcement on Bright Seat Road, the administration recommends a pilot program on Glen Arden Parkway. Uh, and that email was subsequently followed up with an email on October first, uh, further reiterating, uh, clarifications, um, and decision points, um, from the administration to council that are needed. Uh, so that, I just wanted to make sure that that was, uh, clarified for the record. Uh, thank you very much.
Um, Madam Mayor, Mayor?
Okay.
Follow up.
Uh.
Um, you sent out the email, but no, I, I mean, we cannot take action over emails when it comes to the city council. So if you want an action to be taken, you should have waited, you should have brought it to a meeting, and we could have gave a formal consensus, really, because we really shouldn't be doing consensuses in these work sessions. But we could have made a formal, uh, vote at the, uh, at the regular meeting. I don't remember, you know, us, I, like I said, it's been so much back and forth with these, um, because no one, no one continues to answer the question, which I just asked about refunds of the monies that was paid by tickets that were given erroneously. I mean, y'all skipped all over that to go back to prove, prove a point that, or something happened in September. And I'm asking again about the contract and refunds.
So, absolutely, if I can answer that, Mayor Protim, yes, we've asked multiple times for guidance, uh, Councilman, and yes, we do in fact, uh, want to address that. And that is in fact a decision point that we do need council's guidance on right now. So if that is a decision point that can be made, um, here, then that would be helpful as we have, uh, removed all unpaid, and there is a financial cost, um, to repaying, um, those individuals. But the administration wanted to make sure that we didn't do anything, because the moment we refunded one ticket, um, from an individual that had paid that ticket, that leaves us, uh, open, and we set a precedent, um, that we would then have to pay, um, any and all tickets that were brought before. Uh, so before we open that door, we wanted direction from council. Thank you.
Councilwoman, um, Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Protim Ferguson. Um, so Red Speed controls the camera on seven oh four and the camera on Bright Seat Road. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, because, you know, I, I'm gonna have to go back and look through some meetings, because I never remember hearing a presentation by Red Speed. I don't, but I, I'll look through some meetings to, to clarify that I couldn't, you know, I might not have remembered, but uh, I've never seen a presentation, uh, by them. I know with the, the, the stop sign cameras, I have a copy of the contract, it was, it was, um, uh, given to all of the council members during the, 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 uh, when the, uh, ordinance was being, uh, put together, so, but I don't remember. I, I'll, I'll have to go back and look in the, the minutes and look in the, um, you say, and, and the city manager, Simpson, you're saying that this happened with, on a previous administration, uh? Would you happen to know which, was it during the time of, uh, the last, uh, city manager or the one prior to that one? Or prior to that?
I, I, I believe it was one prior, uh, to me, uh, I can get that confirmed and, and make sure I share that with you.
Oh, okay, or get the contract, uh, and share that with us, and then I can go from there to find out, uh? I'd like to see that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I believe we did receive a briefing from Red Speed, but it was in the last session of leadership. So, um, that would have been to the previous council, there is a correct statement, uh, Councilwoman Jones, that there has not been an updated presentation with any new additions or changes that they have made to their policy or way of implementing things. Uh, second point, um, today we had a request for a consensus to be put on, um, for us to yea or nay regarding maintaining the speed limit at thirty-five. I, I do believe, Mayor Protim, that we need to proceed with that, uh, so that we can ensure that the administration has a way forward. A third point, uh, relative to the activation of cameras and deactivation, um, uh, my, my voice right now says, give the people back their money. Because if you're on again, off again, it's just like a bad date. We're done being a bad date. Let's be the city that, you know, the people are expecting us to be. And at which case, let's give them the vote tonight, if, uh, consensus tonight, and, and then move out. And I agree with Councilman Herring, stop cutting off the cameras. If we put the money in and they're on the streets, they need to be working. We need not have them there for the beautification, at least throughout all of the summer now. So let's just move forward. Moving this mission forward is going to take us just being deliberate. And for all those that got tickets thus far, uh, my, my voice on that, uh, Mayor Protim is, they need to refund the money, because again, it's really a sad case to see these cameras on again and off again and on again. It's like, today you're recording, not recording, it's unfair. So let's start with a fair slate to cut the cameras on. Let's give them the speed limit for Glen Arden Parkway. And let's, um, get a new Red Speed update if they're our provider. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, um, Councilwoman Cross. Um, for me, um, I'd like to say that I do remember the email coming out, and I do remember responding. And my response, um, is that, um, I do remember you saying that, that those that were not paid, they would just be, I don't know, waived or deleted or whatever. But then we have a multitude of people that were, um, that received tickets illegally. Give them their money back. Communication is key, which we've been saying. And then you say, you know, you want clarity on, um, what to do from the council, um, before you open up a door. The door, the, the door shouldn't have ever been open. This never should have happened. Never should have happened. So, my thing is, um, and even if it, if it started in another administration, still, communicate. Because there's no way that anybody should just up and walk up to a speed, a speed, um, sign and just change it. And so it's more to this than what is, what's really out there. And this is, this is, is horrible. And for anybody to have, you know, that has anything to do with it, have an attitude, you need to check yourself, because this is horrible. And this did not just affect the ci- citizens of Glen Arden, like I said. You want to bring it on here, just bring it on, because I am really upset about it. I got people, you know, like I said, the last count was sixty-three, well, I got four more. And these people are all over the Prince George's County, one in Baltimore. Now, I don't know what they're speaking on a ticket to Baltimore person, you know, or they're speaking on someone that they know within the county. But nonetheless, there shouldn't even be a question about giving the money back. Because it, it was, it was done wrong. So, um, that is my take on it. And, um, I do not agree with the whole, everything that was done. I mean, it's, it's, and I'm talking mainly, you know, definitely about Bright Seat Road. That's my main issue. Bright Seat Road, because that's why, um, um, that, that, um, speed limit has been that way for over fifty years. Or at least fifty years, or close to it. And we had a camera, we, we had cameras up there, uh, closer to the church, um, that's on Bright Seat Road, and we, and the speed limit was never, um, incre- I mean, decreased. And so, um, I don't know what the financial part or how, whether, uh, my thing is, my question is, um, in paying that money back, is the city fully liable, or is Red Speed going to give money back? How, how is that going to work? Um, administration?
Um, could I answer this one? Um, Mayor Protim, um, I had a discussion with, pardon me?
Um, just a minute. Uh, Mr. Stewart, would you have, um, Mr. Stewart to, uh, elaborate, or did you want?
No, I, I, I believe Mr. Stewart would like to chime in, um, uh, and I can allow him there, and then I can come back and address your question, if that's okay with you, Mayor Protim.
I thought he was addressing it. Um, Mr. Simpson, I mean, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, so I had a discussion with, um, Red Speed recently. And, um, with regard to the refund of, um, the tickets, I believe that it will only be a cost for us. Um, their portion of, or the amount that they collected. um, I don't believe they will want to return that, but this is something that we'll have to discuss with them. And that is something that was on my mind while we are here talking about refunding these. We must understand that a portion of these, um, fees are, um, actually received by Red Speed. Um, so how are we going to, you know, refund the whole forty dollars without getting back, um, funds from them? The whole thing may cost us, but this is something we'll have to discuss with Red Speed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Um, Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Protem Ferguson. I just wanted to get clarity from Councilman Herring concerning the consensus. Now, um, I want to make sure at this juncture, we're looking at all this. I just want to do things right. We need to do things the right way. Now, uh, uh, Councilman Herring, could you clarify to me? Can we take a consensus on stuff during the work sessions or do we have to wait for regular meetings like you, like you, uh, said before we can, uh, take a consensus concerning this? Or should we have a special, uh, uh, regular meeting to sit down and, and, and bring these, uh, like, for instance, the conceptual drawing for the police station and this issue and any other issues that might require us to, uh, take a vote on?
Uh, um, Madam Mayor, ma'am.
Councilman Herring.
Yes, um, yeah, I mean, I think for like the cameras we can, because they were already on and they just turned them off. So that's just a simple consensus of us telling them to turn it back on. We can tell them to turn it back on without having to go to a regular meeting because they were never, technically, they shouldn't have been turned off unless we said to turn them off. And I don't remember it's the council ever saying, you know, turn them off. They turned them off because of all the back and forth. So that shouldn't be an issue. But you know, like with the police station, I think actually like with the police station, that's a whole different story because again, we're using state money and I think we're required by law to actually have a public hearing on that, on that project because we're using state money. So we gotta have a public hearing on that, on that. So that gotta be, that gotta go into a public hearing, you know, which is, you know, and then we can make a decision then on where, how we want to move out there to public, got notice of it, so. Yeah, I mean, yes, I mean, I think if it isn't really involving any money, you can really take a consensus. And you know, the speed cameras isn't, I mean, I guess it is kind of involved with money. I guess my thing with the speed cameras again though, is also is that, um, we don't know what, like I said, again, I mean, I'm not even still clear on the financial, the financial liability of the city. Because here we go again, you know, certain part of it is, certain part of it isn't. And we're not being given all the information, so I can't even make a decision on what to do. You know, it comes down to that and then add to the fact that, um, you know, we really need to get the contract and let, let the attorneys get the contract and say, look, is there a way out, what are, what was their legal obligation to us? To see if they have to come out their pocket with some money because it sounded they made a mistake. The way that the guys that they gave out to our staff or gave out to our people was a mistake. So I, yeah. I mean, yeah, some consensus is, I mean, because really a consensus is, is out, what we want them, what we feel we want them to do. And if we want them to turn the cameras back on, we can do a consensus tonight and say, turn the cameras back on. Because technically they really should not, I don't remember if I've taken a consensus to turn them off. Do, I don't think I remember that.
Okay, um, is that, are you done, um?
Yes, I am.
Councilwoman Jones, that's a new hand?
Yes, he, he clarified, thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Um, Madam Mayor, what, according to Robert rules, you can take a consensus at any meeting. Formal votes are to be, can be done at, uh, either a public hearing or at a regular city meeting. But consensus can be done at any meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go with, uh, I guess we have a two consensus, one, um, two left. One would be, um, the thirty five miles or the thirty miles, um, on Bryce Road. And then the other would be to reactivate the, um, the cameras, both of them? Is that what you're asking, uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes, and I think for the, uh, Bright Seed Road, I think we should just stay at thirty five because even if we decided to drop it to, to, to thirty, they would have to do a new study. The county would have to do another, a, 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 a new study to, uh, determine whether, you know, it's feasible to do it or not.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Okay, so do you want to do two separate or are we gonna just get one answer from each person?
They can do, um, the Bryce Road.
Okay.
Um, yes, for thirty five miles an hour or no, and yes or no for the camera.
Okay, Councilwoman Cross.
Yes, on both.
Councilman Hairston. I'll come back to him, Councilman Harry.
Yes, on thirty five.
Okay, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes, yes, on thirty five. And I also want to reiterate, this letter is also in every councilman, members box. They can pull it up, it was on an email that Mr. Simpson sent. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Oh, the most terrifying being Enoch's counter. I mean, Enoch was taken to the.
Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Yes, on thirty five.
Okay, Councilman Hairston? Oh, he's coming back in.
Oh, do we, we need to do the, um, the speed cameras.
Yes, uh, Councilman Hairston is rejoining right now. Okay. Councilman Her- Hairston? He probably, he did. Maybe, yeah, okay, should I just go to the next one and I'll come back to him?
Yes.
Okay, for reactivation of cameras, um, Councilwoman Cross, you said yes? Okay, Councilman Hairston?
I'm sorry, my, um, it had, mine had dropped. This is what we voting for right here, just the cameras?
Yes.
Um, abstain.
About the thirty five miles an hour on Bryce Road as well.
Sorry.
Okay, Councilman Herring?
This is for the seven oh four, uh, I mean, reactivation, reactivating all the cameras?
Yes.
Uh, abstain from this one. I don't know.
Council, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, yes, for reactivation on seven oh four.
Councilman Williams?
So, my reason I know is because this is a mess. Until people get cleared up, I'm not for moving forward until this thing get cleared up.
And Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Abstain.
And Councilman, uh, Hairston, for the Bright Seed Road?
Just the cameras still?
No, the, the speed.
Oh, abstain, both of them.
Um, is that a new hand, Councilman, uh, Williams? Okay, so, um, next we have, um, code enforcement, um, this is the the last topic of discussion, um, with the, um, HOA's, Councilwoman Jones?
All right, here, thank you, uh, Mayor Protem Ferguson, here is issue number two. Um, and I thank all the council members for chiming in on the first one because we do need to get that, uh, issue addressed. But this issue is, uh, I have been informed that, um, code enforcement has been told not to do any enforcement in the HOAs. I need to see some documentation someplace because code enforcement is always, uh, you know, as far as I've, since I've been on the councils from two thousand seventeen, been, uh, all over the city and doing enforcement of our codes, whether it's a HOA or whether it's in, um, the other parts of the city. I don't understand why they cannot do, uh, enforcement in those areas now all of a sudden. Uh, I understand there may be an issue with, uh, Woodmore because of the turning over of the streets. But, uh, the, the police officers, and even in the police report, they went to Me- Me- Mesel Bush Drive for some issue, they go in and do what they have to do in the HOAs. And to me, code enforcement is on the same level as, uh, a police officer, except they're enforcing codes, uh, traffic, uh, 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 not necessarily traffic violations, but uh, cars, uh, that are sitting in, in different places. And they've always done that. I don't understand why now that they are being told not to enforce anything in the HOAs. Uh, does anybody have any documentation? Maybe, uh, back to again, Ms. Councilman Herring? If you know anything from the previous, like before we came on council, uh, Councilman Williams, you know, was there any dialogue where, uh, uh, the count, uh, the city could not enforce at HOAs?
Madam President, ma'am.
Councilman Herring?
Yeah, pre, since we've been on the council, since I've been on the council, the attorneys have always said the HOAs are private streets, private streets that are priv- that's private property. Um, they have their own bylaws, the HOA bylaws. And if you read their bylaws, they basically, almost mimic exactly what we have here in the city. Um, I've read Woodmore bylaws, I think I had, I've read, um, uh, Glenon Towns. I haven't seen Glenon Frost of Forest yet. But their bylaws basically mimic what we have. And that's why we know our code don't normally go in there because their code, the HOA bylaws address housing standards, uh, colors and all of that other stuff. Parking, that's different, that's, uh, even in parking, they're supposed to address the parking too, because they're private streets. But we've always been, I've always been instructed by, by attorneys that that's private property. So we can't go in there and, uh, invoke city, uh, codes because they have their own codes in, um, according to the HOA, uh, bylaws. All right, thank you.
Okay, so when, I, I'm sorry, Councilman Williams, we'll get to you, uh, but when I had a, a, a person call me from the, I think Frost Community concerning raccoons. And, uh, I think at that time, uh, uh, code enforcement, uh, Thomas was over there and we went over there. And, uh, the, 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 the resident wasn't securing their trash cans and that's why they got all those raccoons. So we, I just, I just made a flyer and passed that out. But he, you know, talked to them and told them, you know, that they have to secure, make sure that their trash is secure and those different types of things. So is, it was there, it was, that's something that I overstepped my bounds on that or were we within, in line with that?
Yeah, and that's, that's the, that's the tricky part there because like you said, that's a health standard. So yeah, like with trash and stuff like that, we still can enforce that because they're supposed to have their trash cans, because we pick up their trash. So we do have a say in that. Um, they, they, they signed an MOU with us and they paid for a trash pickup, so they gotta secure their trash like everybody else and, and, and follow the same health, the health standards and requirements of, you know, your trash and securing it like everybody else. So no, you didn't overstep your bounds with that. I'm, I'm speaking more like, you know, with the housing, like gutters falling down, the color of your house, the unsightly homes and everything else. A lot of that is addressed in the HOA bylaws. I don't think, I don't think trash cans are even addressed in their bylaws, I have to look and see. And that's the thing with that, so if it isn't in their bylaws, we can enforce it.
And what about commercial vehicles? Because there's a big yellow school bus over in the Woodmore area that's been there for weeks.
And what street? And if it's on, if it's on one of their streets, then actually the HOA is supposed to be addressing that issue.
I think it's, um, it's in that little cul-de-sac next to Mr. White's house on Saint Nicholas and, um, I can't think of, uh, the, the cross street, but it's right there in that cul-de-sac, right next to where they have a, it's not, it's undeveloped.
See, and that, and, and actually that, that's in there. And actually in their bylaws, for that street, because that's in the, under HOA, their bylaws is more stricter than ours. They actually need to go to the HOA, HOA president and complain about that and it should be removed because it's in violation of the HOA bylaws.
So the, so the Glen Arden Police Department can't write tickets for those, uh, i- issues like that? I know they write tickets in the shopping center for people parking in the handicap, uh, area.
Yeah, yeah, they can do that in the, in the shopping center, but under, on HOA, under the HOA, the residential area, under the HOA bylaws, they're supposed to be enforcing that, not us. Because they can, because it's private property. That street is private property, tell them to turn the street, once they turn the streets over, we can do what we, we do, we can go in there and do what we need to do. But because they haven't turned those streets over, it's still under HOA, it's still considered private property.
All right. Okay, so that's what I needed to know because, uh, I know before that it wasn't an issue with, uh, uh, code enforcement going to the, uh, HOA areas and enforcing different things. But I guess it's different things that they can enforce and different things that they cannot.
Yeah, and they, they probably need to, and I'm, I'll send them their HOA, the HOA bylaws and they can see what they got in there. Because they can just direct them to the HOA because again, that, that, that vehicle there really should go, should be, it, it is completely in violation of the HOA bylaws. Their bylaws, their bylaws on commercial vehicles are very, very strict, very strict.
All right, thank you so much, that answers my question. Uh, uh, council, I mean, uh, Mayor Protem Ferguson?
Okay, I'm Councilman Williams.
Um, with all due respect, the private property has nothing to do with enforcing, um, our laws. A, a single family home is private property, but our people can come on and enforce the code on our private property. We have vehicles on the grass or whatever the case may be. So it being private property, it's been my history when I was mayor and on council before. If it's in our city, they violating our codes, our code enforcement can, um, deal with it. Whether or not, now we give deference because they are HOA. But if they still in violation of our city, private property, not, private streets are not. They in the city, our code enforcement can enforce our codes. Now, that's how it used to be. I suggest that there is any question, we go to the, we go to the county, because they, they are the same thing, which, what can they do? We ask the county and then we ask, uh, the current attorney, the state, what the state law is now in regards to that or the county law. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Any other discussion on this topic?
Mayor Protem?
Councilwoman Cross?
Yes, I just think that we need to, uh, again, go get some legal sufficiency on this. Uh, um, I acknowledge everything that Councilman Williams stated because there is a reason why, uh, code laws or ordinances, which come with a different level of legality than, because they are im- they are impenetrable. So it's different than a resolution per se, which is an idea, thought that we want you to follow. When we change those laws regarding commercial vehicles, regarding, you know, um, one that we're working on now with, you know, animals. I mean, we chased a chicken and a rooster for about a month and a half in the last two administrations ago. So there is a requirement that everyone adheres to the code because it is the law of the city. Now, I, the HOAs have a certain way of doing things. We can't govern, okay, someone wants pink shutters, someone wants yellow shutters, that's not something that we govern, that is their property. But relative to the safety aspect, which is what I always, uh, saw code as ensuring that everyone has a level of safety. And that includes environmental and health safety, uh, which is why the trash cans is something, uh, and I acknowledge what Councilman Herring said, you know, we gotta buy because we pick up everyone's trash. But relative to the code, codes or laws and those laws, regardless of whether you're an HOA or non-HOA, should be enforceable, um, across the city because that's their application. Resolutions are something different. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cross. Um, Councilman Williams, is that a new hand? Gold hand? Um, Councilwoman Cross, I, um, with all that you said, were you, um, requesting? I, with all that you said, were you requesting from the administration clarity through the attorney, those things that you presented, that, that is a request for the, for the administration?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Yes, we do need to take those to the attorney and get an official statement back from our attorney. Because it's one thing to go to the county and the county's attorney, but our attorney equally has a partnership with the county attorneys, and together they should come up with a corporate answer when it comes down to the enforcement of ordinances. Because ordinances are law, and so they should have a sufficiency in accordance to the law and how it is applied across the city. Thank you for that. And yes, either the Mayor Pro Tim Mayor can take it to the attorney with the city manager, assistant city manager, or code enforcement can bring it before because we're talking about an ordinance affiliated with his office, Mr. Green. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I would just say, administration, you heard that, so you can take the lead. Whichever office, whichever, whether it's code or administration, and get back to the full council on that. Jones, Councilwoman Jones, is that a new hand?
Yes, it is. Thank you. I agree with Councilwoman Cross that the administration should take the lead on this because from what I understand, it was their direction that was given to the code enforcement department to not do HOAs. And there was no reason given. And anything of this nature or anything that has to do with the city, I believe that when you make a decision, you need to have documentation or something to be able to tell any department head why you're, why we're not doing this and come back to the council and let us know. Don't let it be because I just happened to find out, the other council people on here would have not known about this had I not brought this as a topic of discussion. So from cleaning slate, from here on, when something comes up, you make a decision to do something, then have clarification, documentation to say why you're doing it so everybody across the board will understand. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilman Williams? You on mute?
Okay, I said my hand was up before, but but this, this make it perfectly clear. If we're going to take it to the attorney, I don't want to hear what an opinion is. I want fact and I want law cited. Whether it's state law, county law, I don't want to hear opinion. I want law. Okay, because a lot of time we asked and they give us an opinion. I don't want opinion. This is specific and we need to have case law, law. Thank you.
I concur. Thank you for that. Okay, well, I think we're at the end of the road. Anyone has anything last to say? Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, pardon me, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson, I do have one thing I want to say. I know that there is probably a lot of, we received three mail emails from the same address, but concerning the residential parking plan. Do you, I mean, does the council, it would be the pleasure of the council to go ahead and have a public hearing on Tuesday so that we can hear those issues, if citizens have those issues concerning the residential parking plan? So that we can clear the air or clear the slate about that, since I'm not sure if anybody answered those emails, but I know we got those and a lot of people are talking about the residential parking plan. And, and, you know, I think the, the rules and regulations are clear cut that have been set in place. We'll have to work through this to find out how it's going to work. If it's going to work, but still maybe some citizens might have questions concerning it, you know, that you know, because like I said, we got three emails from, from residents concerning it. Anybody have any ideas?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I, I think we're going to have a short agenda on, on a regular meeting, so we can actually take it, we can actually hear from them then. We only got two pieces of legislation. And I'm not, we don't have any presentations, do we? At the regular meeting?
None that I know of, and I mean, right now, unless something comes up for the public hearing, we don't have any legislation, so anything to bring, so that would probably be a meeting that we would not have. So, so you're suggesting because we just have the two, it'll be a short one, let them speak at the regular meeting, Councilman Harry?
Because they can speak on any topic that they need to. And I think it's going to be a short meeting. We only got two pieces of legislation. I don't think it's going to drag out.
I agree.
All right, then, clear on that. So that'll be now, are you suggesting to put it on the agenda or just?
No, it would be citizens' comments, what he's, what he's suggesting.
Okay, all right, then. Oh, Councilwoman Cross?
Just a point of clarity. Are we talking about Charlie's Dispatch, the signs that came up about Charlie's Dispatch? Because I did get a request from citizens for clarity on not only their rating, but also on its utilization. You know, how are they going to be used and because it's a towing service, you know, who are they towing? Because that is placed inside of, you know, areas that are, you know, strategic lines of movement, if you will, across our city. So I did get a citizen request for a briefing or some type of update and also a company rating on the Charlie's Dispatch. Thank you.
Hey, I think the administration did break that company or did some research on that company, is that correct, Mr. Simpson?
Mayor Pro Tim, if I may answer?
Okay, Mr. Green, thank you.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So as it relates to Charlie's crane service, yes. They were picked because, not because they had the absolute best rating. It was because of, you know, they did have a decent rating. But at the same time, I wanted to get a, a tow company that was near the city of Glen Arden so that if someone vehicle did get towed, they wouldn't have far to go. I looked at numerous tow companies that had lots near the city of Glen Arden. And quite honestly, none of their ratings were what we would want it to be. But I noticed that through their, my research is that many of these type of tow companies that tow for repossession and when you call for them to be towed, none of them actually had the best ratings because of the work that they do. Again, I spoke with many companies, went online and checked out many of their reviews. Declined some of their services because of their reviews. But we did settle on Charlie's crane service because they, they have the fleet to be able to respond when there's a need for towing. And also because they were very close to, their lot is close if someone vehicles get towed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And they're in Armory, right?
That's correct.
Okay, well. We are going to adjourn and the time is, what time is it? Nine or two? Thank you, everyone, and you have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.